We'll call this meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the February 2022 Regular School Board Meeting for RBBCSE. Roll call. Please let the record reflect that all of our board members are present this evening. And first up is going to be our Mustang Moment. Dr. Sanders, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Rebecca Gess Scott, and she leads our Edge Media Program. And they are the Mustang Moment tonight, but also like to recognize that the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce has awarded the Edge Media Program with the Leading Light Award. And the Leading Light Award is awarded for an educational program that demonstrates outstanding service and dedication with innovative or exemplary programs that enhance our education community. So I'd like to, this time, invite Mrs. Gess Scott to the mic.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Gess Scott, and I'm the media productions teacher at Edgewood Junior High, our Edge Media Program. And I'm here with a few of my students tonight to share a little bit with you about what we do. This is the first year of our program, and it's been a wild, wonderful, amazing year so far, full of hands-on learning with fabulous technology, full of collaboration in our classroom every day, connecting with community members and community organizations to do authentic work for real audiences, and being able to connect with professionals who are doing this work in the real world and can mentor our students and teach them about career connections that are available in our community, just waiting for them when they're done with their educational experiences and are ready to move on to that next step. It's been a really, really exciting time, but I think the best way to get to know us is to see a little highlight, a little highlight reel of what we've been to for our first semester. So take a look, all about Edge Media.
It looks great on our Android.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think what really stands out about our program the most is our student experiences. And I have a few students who are here tonight to tell you a little bit about their experience so far with Edge Media.
Hello. My name is Frankie Allen, and I am a seventh grader at EJHS. And, sorry, I'm here to discuss how Edge Media has helped me with, with, sorry, with collaboration, teamwork, and communication skills. Edge Media has helped me with these skills by putting us in different groups and helping us work together to tackle difficult challenges, but we have been able to overcome these because we can communicate and ask each other questions. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Claire Pelletier, seventh grader at EJHS. And one thing that Edge Media has really, really helped me with is my time management skills. At the beginning of every class, we meet together as a group and discuss our priorities for the class period and the class periods following that. And I think that can be really, really helpful for future, for future classes and future jobs. And so far, it's been a really, really good experience. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Hope Senior, and working with Edge Media has been a really great experience for me. Being able to see so many new places and meet new people and working the equipment that we use in the classroom has been really fun, and it's been a really great experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It seems like a really exciting project, and I'm glad you guys are so interested into it. Thanks for sharing it with the board tonight. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Next up is our visitor comments. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Earl.
Our first speaker is Courtney Galyan.
Hello. My name is Courtney Galyan, and my maiden name is Bowman. I'm an alumni of Edgewood. I even had Mr. Demas and other faculty here as teachers. I currently have three boys. My oldest is in kindergarten. And first off, I would like to state that I understand in your positions, it is impossible to make everybody happy or content with the decisions that you make. I want to thank you for taking steps yesterday to move closer towards lifting some protocols. My ultimate stance on any issues that arise is to allow parents the opportunity to choose what is best for their children. I have a few talking points here that I would love to have some feedback on. Have you thought about when all of this will end? What will happen to, what will have to happen for our children to be able to attend school as I did and as everyone else here did? Are we going to enter next school year with these same protocols? What about the year after? Will my seven-month-old come to kindergarten with a mask on? That really makes me sad to think about. How long are our children going to have to continue to be malleable and conform to the fears of adults as opposed to just being children? My kindergartner gets upset if he can't find his gator that he wears to school, and that just breaks my heart because then we're searching around the house trying to find one. Are you waiting on local government decisions? Are we following NCCSC decisions on these things? And do all of you have to agree on the policies for us to be able to move forward? How long until we, as parents, can make these choices for our children? How long would be too long for each of you to stand up for the children and us, parents? I believe that most parents would like to do what is best for their child, but by making protocols across the board, that decision is being taken away from a lot of parents on either side that you would make those protocols for. As a family, we choose to not live in fear, and we continue to live our life trusting God. That does not mean that we're irresponsible. It just means that we have different focuses. These protocols that are put in place are bigger than just our school system, and I totally understand that. I ask that we all live above the norm of society and take a stance that will give students and parents the choice. Parents understood the risk of sending their child to school before COVID with thousands of other sicknesses, and we understand the risk with COVID now. I believe that there is a right and a wrong way to go about invoking change, and I hope that by speaking tonight, I can provide that example for my children. I have a church obligation this evening, so I'll be leaving early, but I will watch the replay for responses that are made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Miller.
Can I tilt the mic up before we start? Good evening. Our kids need your help, and I want to see you be a positive driving force for the leaders of tomorrow. You are the appointed and elected leaders of our school system, and there seems to be a disconnect as to who is leading this school system. Based on my attending the last school board meeting and the most recent Board of Health meeting with regards to masks, both of you are placing responsibility or blame on each other. Stop pointing fingers. Now, it's time for you to stand up and say enough is enough. I'm sure you've caught wind of the bonds for the win movement that is taking off in communities all over this country. Is that what is needed here? Do we need to investigate whether your actions have truly been for the kids or some other driving force such as money? I really hope you are going to be forward-minded, strong, and personally accountable for your actions in developing the leaders of tomorrow, but I fear you will cower behind a bureaucratic mask. I applaud you for following the release last Thursday. The Indiana Department of Health, however, am not satisfied with your plan. To be honest, there are some things that you have included within a strategy that are equally disturbing about the school, reserving the right to implement mitigation strategies, including quarantining, contact tracing, and masking, which would mean you, as an entity, would be de facto practicing medicine, which the school system does not have a medical license to do so. It is time for us to truly be concerned about not only the physical but mental health of our children. It puts smiles back on the faces of our children and teachers in classrooms. While walking down the hallways, at lunch, or at recess, you do not have to wait for someone else to say you can't. Dr. Box provided a letter to all school superintendents and local health officials dated October 26, 2021, and that letter, you were given by Dr. Box the freedom to end the masking protocols. Some very brave educators at schools across the state have already moved to removing masks effective immediately and not waiting on a magical date, which is what RBBS communicated is doing. Do you really know how Edgewood students feel about COVID, masking? Do you care? Have you gone to basketball or football games this year? There was a middle schooler that spoke last month. Did you write her name down? Did anyone from the school system speak with her parents about the concerns she brought forth since the last school board meeting? What is positive about masking? What need is there for contact tracing? What need is there for quarantining healthy kids? All these actions are having an adverse effect on children, and it's time for return to normal. We have endured two years of COVID policies, and we've altered the possibilities and education of so many effects that will be felt for generations to come. It is truly time to stop being scared. If someone wants to stop, if someone wants to choose to wear a mask, allow them to do so. Make it their choice. Stop putting restrictions on these kids as they need to develop and learn to be the leaders of tomorrow. We have to provide our children a life with us doing better, providing them with a quality education filled with opportunities, and us encouraging them to stand out and to do their personal best, free from the stress that came with all these policies. Stop masking today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Taylor Pelletier.
I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back and talk again because all this is supposed to be over. If you're concerned about our well-being, then you should be worrying about our mental health. I can't take the mask anymore. We have waited two years already, and I can't wait any longer. You don't want to wait two more weeks. I can't wait another day. I can't wait another week. I can't wait two more weeks. I can't wait another month. Get rid of the masks now. There's no reason to wait. So don't wait until March 4th or later. Do it now, and they should never come back. This has gotten out of control. I want to be able to breathe, have freedom for school to be normal, and have anxiety and stress taken away as soon as possible. If you care about our students, you will take away the masks starting tomorrow. Many other schools have made masks optional already, including some of the schools surrounding us. You should not make it up to the teachers. They need to be full optional. I was challenged at the school the other day from a teacher, and she was asking me why I wasn't wearing my mask correctly. And I told her, she said me, she said to me, "You're in student council," as if I was not being a leader in the school by wearing my mask incorrectly. I feel like that is where we, that where we need is leadership. We need leadership to bring us back to normal and not require masks. I look forward to going to school tomorrow with no mask in foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Brooke Pelletier.
Hello. Dr. Sanders and I have been exchanging emails today, and like I said, he didn't get to read my previous, or my last one I sent him, so I'm just going to read them. I am pleased that hopefully the school will go mask optional, but the big question is if Monroe County drops the mandate, then the schools will be mask optional. What happens if the county mandate continues? I understand the concept of following the rules, and I was urging you to stand up for our kids. Hasn't there been other topics or rules where you had to fight for our kids? The kids already see that the rules are not being followed consistently, and that is frustrating to them. During school hours, the importance of masks is like life or death, but any other school event, it's basically ignored. I know that some of the members of the board have indicated that masks are really not necessary, but that's just the way it is. We should follow it. That is exactly what we're fighting against. Now that the Indiana Department of Health stated no more contact tracing or quarantine is necessary as of February 23rd, there is no longer a reason to be hesitant to go mask optional. We realize there are people on the other side, but we think this is a win-win because those people could still wear their masks if they want to. No one's going to ever tell them the mask wearers to take them off. Thanks.
Steve Pelletier.
Good evening. A little bit of a family affair here. All of us here to talk, just, it's really important to us. I have my notes in my phone, but my phone just died, so I'm just going to try to remember the high points. Some of it's repetitive to probably what you'll hear a lot today, but, and you're probably thinking, well, I just sent out this email with this change in policy. Why aren't they happy yet? And I think we're getting there, but the, the problem is, some of the issues that are still there are just some of the, the uncertainty that is still felt by the policy. I think it's, it's been seen that the policy is very inconsistent and that we obviously are showing everybody that we don't really feel that there's use to the masks. Because if there was importance to the mask, it would be everywhere, in the basketball games, in every after-school event. Everybody walked around here would have masks on, and I don't think that they actually work. I think that everybody thinks that they don't work. Maybe there are people that think they work, and if they do, they have the freedom to, to wear them when they want to. Let's see if I can think of another thing that I wanted to say. I think that's basically the, the main point is just the frustration with being ridiculed at school for not wearing their masks or not wearing them correctly, and then walking down the hall in the basketball game isn't, isn't enforced the same way, or after-school activities, or whatever it might be. And some people on the board even expressed that, yes, I think they're silly, and even when I go over to this other county that's not required, I don't wear it. If it really was a real safety issue, like a chemistry teacher, you're not going to see a chemistry teacher telling their kids to put their goggles on and their gloves or whatever else, and then going home and doing experiments without that stuff on. So is, is the mask really important, or is it just a show that we're putting on to make people feel better? And if it's just for show, I think it's been long enough. We've done all this, all this time to be together in this pandemic and to do what we need to, but it's time to move on, and it's time to take the masks away. Thank you very much.
Parker Pelletier.
Hi, guys. Doing again? Apologies if I ever start stuttering. Let me start off by saying that despite the new changes to the school's safety contingency program, excuse me, sorry, I am still upset. Let me further explain why. Are you really supposed to be following the Monroe County Health Department and the IDOH? Because the weird thing is that almost every other single public building does not enforce the mask mandate as much the school does, and that is where this whole masking does not make sense. How is this so different at school? I spoke with each of you after last time, and I was here, last time I was here, and all of you, except for one, said that you really did not believe the masks are really effective. You traveled to different counties, and you did not wear a mask, and you verbally expressed to me that you hate them. Why would you not take those opinions and relay them to the county? Are you scared of something? Is someone or something prohibiting your ability to speak freely? It is extremely hard, and it confuses me when I feel like I should trust you, but then it feels like you did not do me any justice. I cannot understand your true intentions if I am skeptical, if I am skeptical, skeptical about your trust. Also, last time, one of you said you would not want to make masks optional because people would judge you, and you upset the other side. The ironic thing is that you've already upset our side. You were deciding to get rid of them now because the county allows you to. The real reason you take this opportunity is that now people will not have to blame the county health, people will have to blame the county health department, not you, and I think I understand why. In Canada, if you openly express your opinions about COVID or even protest peacefully, you are considered a threat not to society but to the government. So with all the hate you are receiving, I would like to say that I understand. It is hard to maneuver a health crisis like this with so little and fake information. However, I just can't comprehend why you're so adamant about keeping us masked if you, one, do not believe they really work, and, two, want to really do what is best for the students. I would be a very helpful asset to all of you because I get insight from the students all day. I am with them every single class. I talk to my friends, and almost all of them want these masks to disappear. We do not like being controlled. In the future, and the one thing I hope you understand from this is that I want more student involvement. I want you to involve the students' opinions in these major decisions as well. And if there are people who want to keep their masks on, let them. That is okay. Just do not force them on people who do not want to wear one. I will also add, for the people who are really scared of COVID, why do you still go to school? If you live on this planet, mask or no mask, you will be exposed to germs. I am trying to give you constructive criticism, and I hope that you will take it into account that I'm not constantly, and not constantly use the excuse, there is nothing we can do. I know that academics are slightly plummeting because of these circumstances. For instance, I know someone who was quarantined for about almost a month total, and his grades dropped from As and Bs to Fs, and I know that as a school board, what, thank you, I know as a school board, you don't want to see those happening, so I'm trying to help you guys, help, I'm trying to help us and also help you guys out as well. I am trying my darndest to change things, and I hope that you will be able to do the same. Thank you.
Josh Oresko.
I'm Pelletier. My name's Josh Oresko. That was a corny joke I had. Currently, I have five and six-year-old boys in Edgewood Schools. I spoke at a school board meeting back in the fall urging you to remove these mask mandates for students, based on the lack of data that showed such a policy would keep students and teachers safe. Obviously, I was unsuccessful when I last spoke to you, but the situation remains the same in that now, two years into the COVID era, and just like I said last time, there is still the same lack of evidence showing that mask mandates for children reduce COVID spread, hospitalizations, or deaths for students and teachers in schools. In pushing this policy, the CDC cites three studies to justify their position. The first one in Georgia was pre-vaccine and showed that teachers wearing masks had a slight decrease in spread. Students had no effect. The second study was Arizona post when vaccines were available, and it showed schools without masks were, quote, "more likely to have outbreaks," but it did not quantify the term outbreak or it did not control for community vaccination rates or school testing protocols. The third and final study the CDC cites was done across 520 counties in the U.S. It was post when vaccines were available, and it did not control for vaccination rates or school testing protocols. For those, for those last two studies, they were conducted at a time when, early on, when the vaccination rate actually was correlated with slower rates of transmission or fewer breakthrough cases, as they're called now, as that's a lot more common these days. And so, at the time, areas with higher vaccination were far more likely to have mask mandates at that time as well. So these communities already had less spread anyway, and the comparison proves nothing about the student mask mandates. There are actually even better studies, but the CDC does not cite, conducted during the same time that painted a different picture. County-level studies in California and Maryland last year showed that mask mandates had no effect. Studies reviewing schools in North Dakota, Tennessee, Florida, and the United Kingdom in 2021 that actually controlled for community vaccination rates showed no difference between mask-acquired and mask-optional schools when it came to COVID spread. A Brown University study showed school data in New York, Massachusetts, and Florida that showed the same thing, no difference. We're two years into this pandemic, and neither you nor the CDC nor the state or county boards of health can produce data showing a real benefit to strapping these stupid things to kids' faces. You keep saying you'll change policies based on COVID cases or Board of Health's, Board of Health recommendations, but there's not a shred of evidence that these masks for kids make a difference anyway. Oh, well, the experts recommend. The experts have been about as accurate as astrologists at this point. We didn't elect these people. We elected you to make these decisions that are best for kids. Three-quarters of the U.S. population at this point has some form of immunity. Kids are not at significant risk for COVID, thank God. They deserve a normal childhood to see their friends' faces and smiles and not be treated like they're significant dangers to each other, which they are not. At this point, I would urge you to reconsider this mandatory mask policy and make it optional for students. Thank you.
Michelle Garrett.
Good evening. I'm finding a few areas in the revised safety plan problematic, though I do appreciate a step towards what's agreeable. I do not agree with the school corporation mitigating safety protocols if this emergency order is canceled in the future, the protocols of masking and quarantining when there are times of a surge. There will always be times of a surge from here on out, as there are surges with other illnesses. When the state was still under an emergency order back before school started, we were willing to go mask optional then. Why would we consider masking and quarantining once out of emergency order? It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. The masking and quarantining has proven to be too detrimental to our children to place these burdens on them any longer. They are least affected by this illness, and we, as parents and our families, are well-informed enough to decide upon measures for ourselves from here on out. What do you define as a surge? What was defined as a surge in RSV, influenza, strep throat, et cetera, before all this COVID started? Those illnesses are more detrimental to schoolchildren, and we didn't take these measures in the past. So speaking for the future, if they worked, we wouldn't have had all this continuing like it has since two years ago. And here I urge you again to research and discuss with industrial hygienists. I have, I can send it to you, 140 studies on masks in the general public claiming they don't work. They are peer-reviewed. Penny Cottle gave one mask study during their meeting, and I could trump the heck out of it. So they do not work in the general population. The Attorney General Akita's parental Bill of Rights is completely in the picture now if this emergency order is ended. And the item in the Bill of Rights is, as added, is the parents and guardians make healthcare decisions for their children. It is not the school's job any longer and shouldn't be from here on out, and I do pray that the emergency order is ended. The second thing I have an issue with in the revised plan is leaving field trip decisions, visitor remittance, and social distancing decisions solely up to each building's administrator. This leaves rooms, room for not all students and parents in the corporation having fair and equal access to these things. That has already shown to be happen, and not all administrators are in agreeance. They're not all on the same page. And there have been issues with gossip and assumption-making by some of the administrative and staff, and it just has not been appropriate. Most people I know have been great staff and men, teachers, but there have been few that are a problem with the gossiping. I feel that this will further segregate. In conclusion, continuing these measures after March 4th, and even if temporarily, sets precedent from here on out of taking away families' rights and continued abuse and burdening of our children.
Next speaker is Marcy Edwards.
Okay. So the contingency plan, to me, as I'm reading through the entire thing, just seems like the whole entire the whole entire undertone of it is ready for you to go back to masks. And we are here so that we go away from the masks and we stay done with it. We've done it for two years. We need to be done all together. End it completely. And what are you waiting for? I said it every single time for the last six, seven months. Why did it take so long to send the email? Sunday night at 8:30, I have a high, I highly doubt that you guys are all meeting all day Sunday for that email to come out Sunday night at 8:30. To me, that's just another way for you to taunt these families and to hold the control over all of us. That's how I see it. I have been at every meeting for the past six, seven months and I don't think you're hearing me or anyone else or you just don't care. You sit up there, you hear it, goes in one ear, out the other. Because we're all getting the feeling you just don't care. Thank you, Parker, for pointing out that they have not been including the students. Has any one of you just thought about having a student survey? See how the students are feeling? That's who you're here for or should be here for, but it's not seeming like that. So Demas, for you, I haven't heard 10 words out of you in the last six, seven months really concerning all this. And while, yes, you know, I, I hear you are on Jeopardy. Congratulations. But I also hear reports that you walk your dogs.
But please do not make direct attacks on people.
You're going to listen to me, Dana, thank you. But you walk your dogs with a mask on outside alone. That's the common sense that you lack in making decisions.
I'm sorry, but please do not make personal attacks. You can discuss the issues as much as you want, but please do not make.
It's a lack of common sense for our students.
Do not make.
Just like you, Dana, I talked to you last time.
And I allowed that because it was me and that's fine.
Well, I'll say again, you straight up told me the last time on a phone call that you did not know the numbers at the school, nor did you feel like it was your job or your obligation to know those numbers. I have a real problem with that and for that reason, I'm going to ask you to step down from your position because you don't belong. Demas, if you're, if you're walking your dogs with a mask on alone, I'm sorry. That, the lack of common sense, walk away. Angie, I feel like you are probably a great nurse. I think you and I have a lot of the same morals. But my goodness, I mean, I've been at more meetings in the last seven months than you have. You guys are, Brad, I think that you feel like these masks are a joke the whole time. But I haven't seen you stand up for all of us. It's not that because he interrupted me.
No, your time is done.
And Jerry, since you helped, you hid behind the health department the whole time. There's no more excuses.
Cut the microphone. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. This would include the approval of minutes. I'm sorry.
Jody Myers don't hear. I didn't miss that one.
Okay. Please come up.
Thank you, Greg, because it's kind of, it's kind of hard to talk, you know? You know me, good evening, Jody Myers. I know things have changed, but I still want to address a few things. You may look around and see that there's not as many parents here as what you would like. Dr. Sanders has told me personally that he hears from a lot of parents wanting to keep mask mandates in place. That should not be a driving force for the school board. Just as Justin Trudeau is calling the truckers in the Freedom Convoy a fringe minority, you may think that about us. What you don't know is we have parents who are afraid to speak up because of possible retribution towards their child. We have teachers that reach out to us privately, afraid to speak up because they don't want to lose their jobs. I have two grandsons. They're here with me tonight. Noah is in fourth grade. He's a smart young man and has always enjoyed learning. He absolutely loves to read. We started noticing subtle changes in him when COVID first started. He didn't enjoy school as much. He began to self-deprecate and he had moments where he was angry. He has always been a solid AB student. Last year, he was straight As, but we saw a shift in his excitement to learn. This year, he has struggled to maintain his C average and he has more moments of anger when doing his schoolwork. He finds it hard to focus and concentrate because of the masks, because our children are not all alike. Isaac, I wrote a visual aid for you. This is one of his masks. He breathed so heavy at school, he comes home with this mask soaking wet. He doesn't chew on it. He comes home with it soaking wet. He's gained weight. That makes it harder for him to breathe. And it's just a vicious cycle for him. I took him to Seven Oaks on Friday for their shadow date. First thing that struck me were there are no masks. Seven Oaks has spent the entire year with mask optional. The decision was made for the pick to the parents, left for the parents. At the end of the session, Isaac asked me, can I come back here tomorrow? And when we got off the school bus that day, he said, I love Seven Oaks. They have an increased enrollment of 500 this fall and they're building on. So RBB's parents do have, we do have options. I think you've all forgotten that we live in Ellisville and Steinsville. We do not answer to Mayor John Hamilton or I, Indiana University. The Board of Health is appointed, not elected by we, the citizens. I want you to remember that. You guys represent us. You are supposed to fight for Ellisville and Steinsville and for the students that are in this school corporation. Thank you.
Again, we have approval of minutes for January 3rd, 2022 organizational meeting, the January 18th Board of Finance meeting, and the January 18th regular board meeting. We also have the Treasurers Report for January 2022. And Mr. Durnel, could you give us the claim, please?
Thank, thank you, sir. Corporation financials are as follows. Gross wages and mini payroll on January 6th, 2022, $2,550. Gross wages on January 7th, 2022, $566,792.71. Gross wages on January 21st, 2022, $679,057.36. Pre-claims from 1/1/2022 to 1/31/2022, $4,432.453.21. Claim vouchers from February 21st, 2022 is $377,404.10. Claim vouchers at Forest Hills for February 22nd, 2022 is $3,524.6 for a grand total of $6,061,781.44.
Thank you, Mr. Durnel. There are three donations. $5 from Christopher Bucy for the Junior High Design Lab, $100 from Tri-Cappa of Ellisville for the Student Assistance Fund, and six trauma kits from the RBB Family Store. We also have personnel, D1 through 11, resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations, and E personnel 1 through 15, appointments and transfers. I always like to do the appointments after the vote and so I'd like to do the retirements before the vote, see if we would want to vote on them.
Yes, so our retirements that I'd like to recognize tonight. We have a few. Our Nancy Suedren, who has taught for 39 years, Jennifer Walken, who has taught for 35 years, and Gary Sims, who has taught for 39 years and 14 of which are, have been in RBB. And I'd also like to recognize Dave Bowman with our Maintenance Department, who will be retiring and he has been, had 39 years of service. And you put all that together, that's a long time. And it's always a challenge for me when we lose valuable people who have that much experience and invested so much in our school corporation. I selfishly want them to stick around longer, but they deserve their retirement. They deserve the very best possible retirement and we wish them the best of luck.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. We also have consideration to approve the overnight athletic trip for the high school semi-state rustlers to Evansville. So that being the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Kerr, I'd like to make one, one comment. Congrats to all, to the, to the four teachers that are retiring this year. But also, Dave Bowman doesn't get much credit. And he, he's, 100 years ago, when I worked at the school, get here at 6:00 in the morning and the heat wasn't working. It's like, oh, boy, where's Dave? And Dave, I don't know how he did it, but he always cut the boiler running before the kids got here. And they got put in a ton of time, so I didn't realize it's been 39 years, but, but hats off to Dave Bowman. And I know he will be, his, his skill set will be very much missed, be hard to replace in keeping the, the plant system here working at the school corporation. So hats off to him and again, congrats to all the retired teachers and I wish them well.
Mr. President, I too would like to commend those teachers and Dave Bowman's been a friend for a long time. He's just a little younger than I was in school, but he's always been a great guy. But Gary Sims, we hired Gary away from Mitchell about 14 years ago and when we interviewed him, I said, Gary, I said, will you coach 10 years for us? He said, I will. So we, we hired him. So he fulfilled that requirement and a little more, so we're, I hate to lose him, but like Jerry says, he's earned his retirement, no doubt.
And Gary will continue to coach the girls' basketball team.
Oh, really?
Yes, some wonderful people leaving, but I'm glad we're keeping some of them around for some, some duties still. Nothing further. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the.
Mr. President, I also wanted to recognize a couple individuals that were hiring or transferring.
Yes, please.
If it's okay. I'm very excited that Sam Jones will be, next year will be our Assistant Athletics Director. And Sam is just a, he's a great guy that has multiple talents and he will do an excellent job at that. I already see him at all the games, so you know, now, now he'll get paid for that, I guess. Also, Lisa Wilson will be, become our new instructional assistant for the Innovative Learning Center. And she'll be working with the Media Production Program and doing other duties to work with Jamie Miller. And Lisa's, she's already been talking with Rebecca Gess Scott and, and, and picking up on her expertise. So I'm excited about these two and, and what they'll bring to our school corporation in these new roles.
Yes, I was excited to see Sam Jones on there as well. Okay, so the Assistant Superintendent's Report, Mr. Irwin.
You guys should have the cash flows up there in front of you. Just starting with the Education Fund. January numbers came in lower than projections, which is a good thing. I updated our projections just to show the increase in tuition support based on the Special Education Grant from the December 1 count. Our count did go up, the dollars went up and there was increased dollars thrown at that grant from the state from the new legislative session from back in 2021. Also, I had put in some projections in there for what our February count will look like. We'll continue to work on that when we get ready to sign off. February Count Day was February 1st. We have not signed off on that yet. We'll probably sign off on it here soon with the state just to verify, do a final validation on our number. And we'll turn that in and then I'll give you an update on that next month. But again, overall projections there at year end didn't change drastically from what they were last month. And the Debt Service Fund, going to the next page there. We did get our tax anticipation warrant in from the Indiana Bond Bank. Again, that's something that we hold on to throughout the year for cash flow purposes and then we return it before the end of the, of the calendar year. We did make all of our debt service payments that you'll see highlighted in yellow there in the month of January and then also moved over our dollars into the textbook rental fund that comes from the debt service fund as well. Everything went as planned. Moving on to the Operations Fund. Again, real close projections. We did pay for our property liability insurance, which is why the property, the claims look a lot higher this month. We pay that bill all at once for the entire year. We don't pay it monthly. It's paid out right at once. Throughout the rest of the year, you'll see those claims and operations level off a little bit more. You'll see a couple months in there along, along the course of the calendar year where you see them a little bit higher when we're making payments on buses, buying new buses, we're making major, major purchases on bigger equipment. So with that, Operations Fund still looks, you know, still look on target for what we were looking for. Again, no major changes from what I presented to you last month and, and everything looks good there. I did have a couple of side things that I wanted to just to update you on. As you know, we're doing an enrollment study for the Indiana Business Research Center. They are diligently working on that. We expect that to be done sometime during the month of March. When that, when that is done, we will get that presented to you guys as the board. And they will also use that to give that over to Lancer and BB, who's doing the facilities study on all of our, on all of our facilities, whether it's, you know, all the way from the school buildings to the athletic facilities, to the technology building, you name it. So they're, they're coming through. That's, that's moving along nicely. They, they've done the inspection of all the inside of our buildings. They'll be sending in engineers, mechanical engineers here in the, in the coming week to start to look at all of our mechanicals. And then they'll come in and do an outside assessment of all of our buildings, meet with different various leaders around the corporation and start to gather input. And then still on, on track for looking like probably a close to end of the school year timeline for finishing up that facility study, which again will culminate with a presentation to the board from Lancer and BB about what it is that they find. So I wanted to give you a quick update on the progress of those two things because obviously they're very important to the things that we're doing and the planning that we have going on. That, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Durnel, how, how are we doing as far as, I know this last year and a half, there's been a lot of different grants that we had to get reimbursed for. How, how are we, like with the CARES grant? Are we being fully reimbursed for all that or is it a percentage or?
Yeah, it's, it's reimbursable throughout the month. So there, during the 1st and the 15th of every month is when we apply for reimbursements as we expend out of those grants. The CARES 2, 1 is, is almost pretty much completely gone. The CARES 1 is nearing towards the end of what we have left. And then the SIR 3 funds, we're, we're working into those. But yes, it's a reimbursement twice a month based on our expenditures and then we send them an expenditure list coded out and then we apply for that reimbursement and then the state sends that to us once we send it in.
And will that, will that bucket diminish to a point where all schools will not be taken care of or is it first come, first served?
It's, it's, all of those dollars have been allocated. So those schools have those dollars allocated. It's not going to diminish and then you can't get the, the funds that they've already, they've already given you. So those funds are sitting there in reservation for our school corporation. And then as we use those dollars and we send that in and show them how we're spending it along with the budget that we submitted to the state, then they reimburse those dollars.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Next, we have an update on the Ready Schools. Sanders.
Right, so tonight we have Jamie Miller with us. She is our, as you know, our Ready Schools Coordinator. And Jamie is going to share some exciting progress that we're making with Ready Schools and also share some information about a special opportunity called Upskill that we will be participating in. Jamie, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you as always. I appreciate all of you and just the extra time. I'll try to move relatively quickly through this first part. Again, it's an update, so a lot of this should start to look familiar to you all. And then we'll get into the newer part, Upskill, which is another initiative that we're partnering with ROI on. So I want to take a second to acknowledge Emily Mankeydick and from the ROI team. She's joining me tonight and I just can't say enough about the unwavering support that we have from that partnership, from ROI. And just the spirit of regionalism that they are fostering, so we have the opportunity to learn from the other districts around us. I just, this presentation wouldn't be what it is without acknowledging that. So this should look familiar to you, the three pillars of our original implementation plan. Innovative teaching and learning strategies, career awareness and readiness experiences, and then family and community engagement. So those were the three strategies that we identified through our planning year as every strategy that we really wanted to pursue. So those were the three strategies that we identified through our planning year as every strategy that we really wanted to pursue and continue to bolster fell into one of those three pillars. And the strategies down below from our design labs to Edge Media, which I can skip right over now because you've been able to see that in the Mustang moment tonight. Each of these strategies, it'll be just an update on where we are with implementation of each of those individually. So these are the latest photos of the I L C. I'll share this presentation with you all through Dr. Sanders so you can see the photos in the slides a little better. But each of the four spaces in the Innovative Learning Center that's housed within the high school are all but finished. So we're awaiting furniture deliveries, equipment deliveries. Each of those devoted spaces has been a building block on top of all of the progress that we've made through first our STEAM initiative and then the planning grant. So to say that those spaces were intentionally designed to meet the needs of our students, K-12 would be an understatement. From the presentation room to the media production studio, which you already heard about, the building blocks that that's being built upon. And then the design and fabrication lab that mirror the same labs, the STEAM labs at the elementary and then the design lab at the junior high. Everything's being crafted intentionally to meet our students right where they are, but also challenge them from the grade band before them, coming from the junior high to the high school, et cetera, to build on the skills that they've already developed and also get them closer and closer to approaching those industry level skills and knowledge and tool awareness, all of the above. So the picture in the top right is particularly exciting here because that's a high school math class that doesn't always, it's not an environment that may traditionally look dynamic and those kids are up, moving around the room, planning. That's Mrs. Niehoff's classroom where they're using trigonometry to create toys for Pantry Two Seven Nine. Now they're designing flip books to donate to the Children's Therapy Clinic. She's finding real world problems for them to use their skills to solve in the true spirit of PBL. Media production, again, there's a video, a little clip, their first official live broadcast that when you receive the slides, be sure to check that out. But I'm gonna skip right over that since you were able to see and hear about Edge Media already tonight. The second of those pillars of our plan, career awareness and readiness. So again, speaking of K-12 progression, from career awareness in the early grade levels, giving our kids ideas of what careers are out there in our region available to them beyond what mom, dad, grandma, teachers do, the careers that are most prevalent around them, they understand, they know they want to be something that they see, right? But we can't have, these students can't envision themselves in a role that they haven't seen before. So representation is everything. So giving our kids exposure in the early grades to the careers that are available is critical. But then now as we're building up through the grades, a lot of that foundation that we've laid with Project Lead the Way curriculum, now we're building on it with the more tangible, authentic, relevant, local connections with our own partners here in our region. So we're not just teaching them about careers that may be growing or maybe in demand somewhere, but we're really starting to refine through Ready Schools what we built in those foundational grades through STEAM with real world connections in our own community. So from the internship that you see a photo of there on the left, that's a student in an existing standing internship at Westgate. So partnering with Crane, representing the National Security and Defense Sector. That's a student that's pretty goofy by nature if you were to talk with him by personality. He has a really fun, boisterous personality and then we were able to see him in this position in a suit and tie, representing his project that he worked collaboratively with students from other high schools in our region on this robotics project to serve as his capstone for his internship. And then the student on the right, she lost her placement this last semester due to COVID and quarantine hosts. And so on the fly, we had to really think creatively about how to replace her. And she was interested in the trades and it occurred to us that we have the trades represented right here on our campus because of our own construction projects. So our general contractor there, our supervisor, was gracious enough to take her in and let her see all of the different trades that were being represented right here within our school walls. So she was able to find a safe, local, close by, authentic internship placement. And all of these internships that we're building and what I'll speak to here in a second with Upskill, we're trying to align within these pathways. So not only a K-12 pathway, but then again, creating this vision of what does this sector, what does this career pathway look like in our community? So that our kids understand what is business management, what is entrepreneurship and what does that look like for me? Within that business pathway, we've now, again, organically just following student feedback, teacher feedback, continuing to listen and hear from all of our stakeholders. For us, we were, through the planning process, remember, we were able to travel around the Midwest and see what other schools are doing. But the machine shops and some of the student-run businesses that we saw were really intriguing. But you'll hear from anyone that was part of that planning process, none of those perfectly fit our community. They didn't perfectly fit our culture, our career sectors. And what did continue to consistently emerge from that stakeholder feedback was this idea of a student-run coffee shop that would boost the culture and the climate within our high school. So we were fortunate enough to be able to remodel a portion of our high school media center and that's that colorful picture you're seeing there on the top, the coffee corral. So from beginning to end, I hope the students would tell you that they've not only been aware of the process, but that they've had a voice in how that coffee shop has come to fruition. So from the design of that mural, from the art club to, we'll, by this Wednesday, we'll have the final three designs for the logo, for the business logo, which Hoosier Hills Credit Union has continued to show up for both in human and financial capital, showing their support for this project. And they're going to co-brand all of the paper goods for the coffee shop. So that logo that one of our students will design or has designed and it will be chosen as the final logo for the business will then go on every paper good, every napkin, every cup that we serve through the coffee shop with our logo as well as Hoosier Hills Credit Union, showing that tangible sign of partnership. So the coffee shop has been this outlet and this real world connection for our business management students. So what started out as we thought one business pathway has now taken, kind of forked into entrepreneurship, which is a much more creative outlet for our business students and the business management pathway, which is headed in this direction of being able to take on this management role within our schools so that our kids can learn and they can practice these employability skills in a really real way, while not only meeting a need within our school, but also being able to practice all of that within a safe environment. So they can fail and fail forward hopefully and have a better idea before they leave us of what their own career aspirations may be. And just to give you an idea, this is just one SWOT analysis, an example of how we're continuing to return back to that plan and continuing to reevaluate what the goals and the objectives are, but also how we're measuring those objectives. So this was part of a, a report that we submitted to the state specific to PBL and project-based learning. So whereas you remember many years ago, we were able to train a majority of our teachers in project-based learning and again, create that foundation. But now we're circling back to see what are the holes in project-based learning district-wide, what are the residual needs? And community partnership was one of those that we were hearing through teacher surveys. So now we're returning back to try to reinforce what do those partnerships look like? So you see a Google sheet there on the top where as instructional coaches, what you've known us over the years as STEAM coaches, have maintained this database of partners that we can go to, to collaborate with us to really enrich student learning. Now we're uploading all of that information into Naviance, which is our college and career platform. So there's a new work-based learning element to that software so that it's not only a database to continue to record all of those interactions, but it's a searchable database. So then our teachers have more ownership of being able to explore who are those partners that are eager to support the schools and how can we continue to make those partnerships mutually beneficial with our industry leaders. So that's just the one example of how we're continuing to try to grow and iterate through this plan. And this is, so this is Upskill, one of the newest elements that falls under the Ready Schools umbrella. So you always hear me talking about all of the innovative and collaborative and creative things that we're doing. But this is one of the really specific career awareness and readiness pieces that again, we couldn't have seen coming. And we're really just trying to trust the process and trust the evolution of our implementation plan. So Upskill is one of the newest initiatives from ROI that's a, a work-based learning internship. So where our internship program at the high school over years past has been a career exploration internship. Our students find placements to explore a given career, decide whether or not that's a good fit for them. They may get a really broad perspective of what a company or an industry does. This will be a much more focused, in-depth experience where they can actually also end up getting paid. So we have partners, these are examples of letters of support, partners that have already shown up, so to speak. They've already agreed to take a seat at the table and join us and not just support us, but they really understand that we have an investment in the economic prosperity of our region and we understand that we're producing the talent that they need and we want to treat this like a mutually beneficial relationship between education and industry. So again, these are all slides that you all can review later. But just a quick overview of what Upskill is by design from ROI, this regional network of work-based learning, these industry partners that again, have already agreed to join us and pay our students. That's probably one of the most notable aspects of this particular initiative is that these aren't just focused internships in some of the most in-demand sectors. It's a paid internship. So these students are starting out at thirteen to fifteen dollars an hour in their first year. And then the, the wages go up from there. They have a set number of hours that they'll work. We have support in place through this grant that I'll share on one of the last slides to support them through workwear and support transportation, any needs that our students, especially those that represent an economic need, any barriers that might be in their way historically to have these paid, robust internships, we're trying to break down those barriers and equalize that access point for all of our students so that they really can have an authentic experience and leave with really tangible skills when they graduate from Edgewood. So we hope that this is a program that's really gonna set Edgewood apart and it's gonna be something that throughout our region, we can really lead in a way that we've been able, like I said, with the student-run businesses to learn from other schools along the way. This is one of those things that I hope others are coming to us to learn from. So you can see some of the different sectors there that are represented, Boston Scientific as a life science employer, TriStar, S A I C. They represent the National Security and Defense Sector and align both with engineering pathways and computer science. So a lot of our course pathways may align with more than one of these sectors and vice versa. Even automation is another employer that represents the advanced manufacturing field. Indiana Limestone Fabricators and Texicon are all of the employers. Five of the seven employers are also within driving, easy driving distance for our students. So again, trying to break down those barriers to get them access to employers that represent all of these fastest-growing industries. And this is just a, a look at the earned grant that I mentioned that again, just aligns perfectly with those same sectors. So advanced manufacturing, building and construction, and health and life sciences are the three sectors that we chose in collaboration with MCCSC to pursue both, I should have also mentioned Hoosier Hills on here as a perfect intermediary between us and MCCSC. So the Hoosier Hills Career Center is already pursuing and has in some cases in place partnerships that represent these trades and these fields so that our students already are going to have access to additional employers. And again, we're just with this grant, pursuing those kids that may have barriers in their way to access these same experiences so that we can ensure that all of our students are finding experiences and then skills that are gonna empower them and equip them to leave us with both the confidence and truly the tangible skills to find success immediately after graduation, whether that's in post-secondary education or going into the workforce directly. So that's the newest piece to the Ready Schools plan and hopefully, if you have any questions, I can, I'm happy to entertain those now or another time.
Questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Board, after the meeting, if you, if you'd like to, after the meeting or you want to come back at another time, we'll take you through the Innovative Learning Center and just kind of give you a preview. We're still waiting on some furniture and equipment, but we're ready to roll. And I, I think down the road, you're gonna see some truly exciting things that, that will make our community proud.
And I think it's wonderful that there, we all know that there's a huge labor shortage and we're doing the best that we can in preparing our students for those good jobs. And so we really appreciate the hard work that you're doing and your team's doing to, to make that happen here.
I got a chance to walk through the library this morning and see the coffee shop. It's, it's amazing how much has happened in there in the last couple of months and it, it looks great.
I know more about health department requirements than I ever knew I cared to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration to approve a revised marketing plan. Dr. Sanders?
Sure. COVID really slowed down a lot of our plans that, that we had prior to March twenty-twenty. And it, it really does feel good to start getting back to some of these, these initiatives and seeing some progress that the pandemic seemed to slow down. And one of those is the marketing plan. There are just some aspects of the marketing plan that you just could not implement during the pandemic. So in order to improve our communications, in order to give a jumpstart to our marketing plan, as you know, we hired Brittany Tucker to be our, our Communications Coordinator. And if you have, if you've been on campus, you'll see Brittany just about everywhere, trying to gather information and sharing that with our school community. So Brittany is here tonight to talk about our marketing plan and then afterwards, we're gonna ask the board to approve that as a confirmation of the plan.
Good evening. So as Dr. Sanders was saying, we had a marketing plan back in twenty-nineteen and then with COVID, obviously, a lot of things couldn't happen from that marketing plan. But it was a great jumpstart on what we wanted to do. So based on that, based on talking with teachers, with families, with staff, based on a family survey that we took back in twenty-nineteen and got over a hundred responses, a lot of good info from the families, from the students. And just based on talking to different teachers and staff right now, we've revised our marketing plan to really focus on what we wanna look at in our visions going forward. So I just want to talk about a couple of the focal points that we want to focus on for the marketing plan. So internal marketing, we really want to focus on having our students and families being happy to be at Edgewood. We want them to be proud to be here and to want to stay in the Edgewood Schools District. We're starting our welcome team back up, so we really want to welcome in new families to the community. So as people come in, we want to be the first face they see. We want Edgewood Schools to welcome them. We want to give them info about what Edgewood Schools is and why we can be a great for them. We want to improve our communication, both between schools and with the families and just really streamline things. One of the biggest things I've heard from families is that they are getting so much information from different areas that they really wished it was just a lot simpler and easier and that they would get the info in just one place. So we're really looking at different ways to just really utilize information to streamline in. We're really focusing on our social media right now, so that's been one of the biggest things. We've had a lot of people interacting on our social media, a lot of interaction from the community and from different families and the schools and just a lot of different areas. So that's been something great to see the interaction there and that people are really caring about what's going on in the schools. We want to focus on donors and partners, so that's a big part of Ready Schools also, is focusing on bringing in different partners from the community so they know how they can help us, both as individual students and help the schools, just so that we can give them ideas of what they can do to help. We also want to focus on partnerships with families because we know that our families care so much. Obviously, all the amazing people that come out to the board meetings every week and that come out to ballgames and come out to plays and different things. So we really want to focus on bringing families connected into the school days also, so they know what's going on. We want to continue to highlight Ready Schools because they're doing such an amazing job on the different things they're doing. And we think that's something that's very special and unique about Edgewood. So we want to continue to focus on them and highlight the great things that they're doing. We want to keep updating the website, making it simple, easy, so when someone goes to the website, they know all about Edgewood Schools and they can find whatever they need. We want to build a community between our schools so people have an easy transition, students do, to go from one school to the next. And so students feel connected and so the younger students feel connected to the older students and they want to go and be in the junior high and be in the high school. Today, we had our Future Farmers of America students from the high school go and read to students at the EPS. So it was just great to see that connection. The younger kids loved it, the older kids loved it. So just doing more things like that to connect the schools. And then the last thing is just focusing on teacher satisfaction and recruitment. Edgewood's schools are growing immensely, obviously with the new preschool and just all different areas and all the new building construction going on, there's a lot of growth in Edgewood Schools. So we want to focus on bringing in even more teachers and also equally as important, focusing on the teachers we have and making sure they're happy. Because we care about our teachers, our teachers are some of the most amazing people. They do an absolutely amazing job and it's been so cool to see that as I go throughout the school buildings, just to see the amazing things they're doing. So we really want to make sure that they're happy and see how we can help them. So that's our main focal points and if you go in the rest of the packet, there's more- Uh, so that's our main focal points. And if you go in the rest of the packet, there's more details about each of these things. Um, and I'd be happy to talk to you guys anytime you have more details. Are there any questions?
I have one, Brittany. You, uh, we, unfortunately, we had a meeting that had to be rescheduled. Have we had a chance to find a date for that?
Uh, we're still working on that. Yes, hopefully next week.
Okay, thank you.
So I would recommend approval of our marketing plan.
The motion?
Mr. President, I move approval.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have a consideration to approve contracts with Solution Tree for our PLC coaching. Dr. Sanders?
Thank you very much. So, uh, our school corporation this year has, uh, entered into a process of refreshing our professional learning communities. It's, it's a, a method that, that we've have used, uh, to, uh, provide teachers and principals with a time for collaboration, a process for collaboration. And we took this year to, to breathe some new life into that. We have some training for, uh, PLC, uh, leadership team, uh, teams at the beginning of the school year. In October, we had that same consultant come back and, uh, conduct some training with our teachers. And so now we're transitioning from, uh, that training process to more coaching. Uh, so that as this year, as our, uh, schools and their grade levels and departments have make, uh, made a lot of progress, uh, in our PLCs, now we want to bring the consultants back and, uh, have the consultants take a look at what we're doing, uh, give our teachers, our principals, a chance to ask some questions. Uh, if they're struggling with, with, uh, a pro- part of the process, get some suggestions. And so we will be having, uh, Mike Haggadon. And Mike, uh, uh, came to us, uh, from Washington, state of Washington, and did the training for us, uh, this past fall. Uh, he's going to continue to work with our, uh, junior high and high school. Uh, and he'll be coming back for a virtual coaching day, uh, March thirty-first, and then an in-person coaching day, uh, on September sixth. And, uh, that's September, September sixth day will be an e-learning day. The March thirty-first day will be, uh, having, uh, rotating subs, roaming subs come in and, and giving teachers a chance to leave the classroom and, uh, speak to their, to their coach. Uh, as we move to the coaching process at the elementary level, uh, Mike had a, a secondary background. So we wanted somebody who could work, uh, specifically for our elementary, uh, schools. And so we have a, a Che- Cheyanna Leva. And, uh, when I meet her, we haven't actually met yet, and I hope to be able to learn how to pronounce her last name. I'm sure I, I just messed that up. But she has a lot of experience. She's been an elementary principal. And, uh, she's going to be coming and working with our elementary teachers, like I said. And we, uh, we will be splitting her up between the EEECC, EPS, and EIS. So they have, uh, two virtual coaching days, uh, March twenty eighth, uh, twenty, March twenty eighth and April first. And then, uh, she'll be coming back for an in-person coaching day, September sixth, the same day that Mike's coming for the high school. We are partnering with Solution Tree, uh, to provide us with these, uh, really, uh, expert, experts in PLCs. And, uh, these people, they are well-known throughout the country, so we're lucky to have them. Uh, and, uh, so we have two contracts, one for Mike Haggadon and one for Cheyanna Leva. And, uh, so ask for your approval on both those agreements. And, uh, all of this is paid for through our Title II grants. And Title II is specific for professional development. And it's, so it's a really great use of those grant dollars.
The motion?
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? I really like how you've gone through and kind of revived the PLCs and, and, and put some new, new life in it. I mean, I know it's something we've been doing for a long time, but every now and then, it's, it's good to, to, to freshen it up.
You're exactly right, my, uh, Dana, because a, a lot of times, uh, uh, sometimes an initiative that the school corporation is, is implementing, uh, i- it doesn't get new life breathed into it, and so it kind of just fades away. And so the PLCs were too important for that. And so I think it's really been a good idea to, to breathe some new life into our efforts there.
I think I'd like to join you again on the thirty-first, if that's all right.
Anytime, Mr. DeVos.
Any further? Hear nothing? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have, uh, as an informational item, um, our Neola policy revisions, first reading. Dr. Sanders?
Right. So periodically, we will ask the board to, uh, to look at some policy revisions. And so tonight, we're looking at, uh, policy volume thirty-three, number one, and volume thirty-three, number two, for the first reading. Uh, like many other school corporations across the state of Indiana, uh, we partner with a company called Neola. And Neola works with a law firm called Lewis Cappus. And, uh, uh, they look at the, the changes that, that might have been made in state or federal law. They look at the policies and just make sure that, that you're aligned with, uh, any changes that have been made. And so we have a consultant with Neola and he comes down and he meets with Matt and I. And we go through those changes and we talk about them. Uh, and so those have been shared with you. They were in the board packet for you to review. Uh, if you have any questions on, on any of them, if you want to meet and go over anything, we could do that. Uh, but they're, tonight they're just for first reading and, uh, and we'll ask for you to approve that in, in, uh, in the March board meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have permission to purchase three lawn mowers. Mr. Irwin?
Last year, we started, uh, replacing our mowing fleet. Uh, we took care of a couple of our riding lawn mowers and this year, we want to finish off the last three uh, so that we'll have replaced all five of our riders. Uh, we'll have four seventy-two inch and then we'll have a standing, uh, sixty-inch that will allow us to kind of get into some tighter spaces around the school. Um, last year, we got a new tractor. We've been replacing a lot of the equipment that we use to take care of an absorbent amount of grounds that we have and, and our maintenance crew takes care of. And that machinery is obviously pretty vital to us getting that done in an efficient manner. And so, uh, the upgrades, upgrades to that are, are well-warranted. Those machines that we're replacing have quite a few hours on them. Um, the quote that we're recommending is from Richards, uh, for the Cub Cadet models, which matches very similar to what it is that we got last year. Um, so that we'll have a, a fleet that is exactly the same, which will make things for repairs and things that they need to do a lot easier instead of having four different models of mower that they have to try to figure out, which makes things easier on our mechanic and other times like that when we need stuff done. The total price of the three mowers, we're really pleased with. We got the state discount on it as well. Obviously, we solicited the required bids. Uh, but the final price for all three mowers put together, less our trade-ins, we'll trade in the three mowers that we're getting rid of once the new ones come in. Because again, the reason we're bringing it to you this early is just to make sure that we get the mowers in time for cutting season. Um, the final price was twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, which was definitely, um, below what we were anticipating two years ago. And those, those prices have stayed relatively stable, and so we were really pleased with that, especially because of the state discount that we get on those mowers. Funds will come out of the operations fund, um, as planned through our, our normal budget year. So with that, I ask for your approval.
I move approval, sir.
I'll second.
You second. Any questions, comments?
I, I just want to thank Mr. Irwin. He and I talked about this last week a little bit and publicly thank Mr. Caldwell. He's put, he put a lot of time in on it, right?
Yeah, Arnold leads the way on that. Um, and so he's the one that goes out and talks with the different vendors and around town and, and figures out the machines that we need. Last year, we brought out a bunch of different mower types and, and used them on the grounds because obviously we have places where there's hills and, and different challenges that can make sometimes being on the mower dangerous. And so we went and found the model that we, that we thought worked best for us. And so, uh, he's led the charge on that and has been instrumental in making sure that we get the right machine for our grounds.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Mr. Irwin, now we have permission to surplus two of our school buses, number sixty and number forty.
Yeah, so, um, we are surplusing them so we can sell them at auction, get a little money back, uh, for these two buses that are not in use right now. Um, last month, we brought to you permission to purchase two new buses for a bus replacement plan. We're going to take two buses, surplus those, get rid of those, continue to update our fleet. Uh, one of those being the old Mustang bus, which is a bus that I know some, you know, is, it's a cool bus. Uh, we haven't used it in a while. Uh, to replace a bus like that is a little over two hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars. And that's not a bus that we're using on routes. And so it's just, at this time, we're going to choose not to replace that bus for another bus like it. It doesn't mean in the future that we might not look to do something like that again. Uh, but at this time, we're going to go ahead and, and create the space, more space back there in the lot as we continue to finish that out and make sure that we can continue to keep our fleet updated and we have working, running buses to make sure that they're back there and ready to go. So with that, I ask for your approval.
I move approval of the surplus of the two buses.
I'll second.
Any questions on that?
Uh, yeah, I just wondered if we can start a good auction on the activity bus. I think we could probably get some people to bid on that.
On that, on the good activity bus?
Yeah, yeah. Cause I, it, it, uh, there's warm feelings associated with that.
Around the world.
When it comes around and it goes out on auction, I'm sure we'll have plenty of bids.
Well, I know, I know that some people informally refer to it as the butcher bus, so.
Nothing further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, we have consideration to approve a partnership agreement with United Way of Monroe County. And we have Vicki Coffey here this evening.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, thank you for your time this evening. As you know, we have been a United Way agency for many years. Uh, the United Way has recently changed their certification allocation process. Um, we have completed both applications and, uh, we are here tonight, um, asking for that approval to continue our partnership with the United Way. That application, of course, for the certification and the application is in your, in your packet. This is something new. Um, the United Way information has not been brought to you before. Um, and, and the application process or the certification, um, they're just changing that. Uh, I believe it's just kind of to, to develop more of a partnership with these agencies than just giving them the money. So, do you have any questions about it?
Any question? Hear none? Do we have a motion, uh, to approve the partnership agreement with, you know, United Way of Monroe County?
I'll move approval.
I second.
Move and second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And while we got you here, um, a corporation-level wellness policy review that you have for us tonight?
Yes, so, um, wellness policies are mandated, of course, um, back in two thousand and seven. And since then, um, annually, the committee goes through and makes any recommendations to the board and makes those amendments. And then, of course, it's gone across Neola, um, for those policy changes and then it's posted. Uh, another mandate is that we have our wellness policy reviewed and evaluated every three years. The last review was in twenty nineteen. Um, our scores in twenty nineteen, uh, our total score was a hundred and thirty-two. What you're looking at here for twenty twenty-two, for the three-year review, is our total score of a hundred and thirty-eight. So we did go up six points there. And the total comprehensive score is eighty-three, so essentially we have a B. It's important to understand, though, that this assessment tool goes beyond our current USDA standards, which our school corporation has currently met. Um, there's six components evaluated, nutrition education, U.S. standards for USDA gel nutrition programs and school meals, nutrition standards for competitive and other foods and beverages, physical education, physical activity, wellness promotion and marketing, and then the implementation, evaluation, and communication. So, um, the, the numbers, the comprehensive score, of course, is the content of the policy and the strength score is the language. So that strength, strength store, strength score, excuse me, is a little low because we did replace some shales and musts by recommend, recommending and shoulds. So, um, I'd imagine some of you guys will remember the, uh, donut debacle? Okay. That's just what we've pointed over the years is the donut debacle. So, um, removing some of that harsh language, but still where it's, where we're, you know, improving physical activity and nutrition education within our students and staff. So we did get a B. Um, if we would strive for an A, that'd be great. But we'd be ser- serving celery at baseball games instead of nachos. So anyway, those type of things is what we do, be doing. Um, we've really made a lot of strides in physical activity, um, especially during the course of the day. You know, uh, physical education would be great, sixty minutes a day, K through, or pre-K actually, through twelve, every single day for every single kid. Um, but times are just not what they were back when we were in school. So at any rate, we, we are getting a lot of physical activity, though, throughout the other course, the, throughout the course of the day in other areas, like stability balls in the classrooms and, and teachers walking kids out in the, um, on the trails and all of those lovely things that you see during the course of the day, um, where we're getting a lot of walking in and a lot of other physical activity. Uh, so the review, this is just to be reviewed by the, by the board every three years. And, um, there's not really a vote or anything. It's just informational and we just would like you to review it so you know where we are. Any questions on it?
I just noticed that it seemed like a lot of it was just wordsmithing, just changes in, in words that they were questioning, so, yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And we are about the USDA standards and we do a lot of, um, great things. This well-set review is by the Indiana Department of Ed- Indiana Department of Education. Um, and it's through Coordinated School Health, which is now a whole school, whole community, whole child approach.
We appreciate your hard work on this and keeping us informed and, um, you've just, your team has just been doing such a wonderful job. I, I was so happy with the food truck and being able to get out to, to, to our students to make sure that when they were at home, that they had a opportunity to have a good meal. Um, and you've just done a really good job of making sure that our kids do have the nutrition, but not only that, we're well-rounded, the, the athletics of the, a- a- as well. Um, so we appreciate the, the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
You, you know, Vicki does do an excellent job. In fact, she did a great, such a great, great job presenting tonight. I think maybe we ought to have her come to every board meeting.
I think she'd love that.
My boss tells me to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerr, uh, number, item number fifteen is actually Rick Rauten.
Okay. Um, so we're on consideration to dispose of surplus technology equipment. Uh, Mr. Rauten?
Good evening. Um, so as you've seen in the past, we've come to you and asked for the, uh, some equipment to be donated or to be recycled for, um, end of life. And so we're asking you again to accept the small list that we have, uh, to be recycled. Uh, there is a chance that we're going to try to get some money out of the projectors that were in that list. Uh, they're in pretty bad shape, so I'm not for sure if anybody's really going to want them, but we're going to attempt to try to do those through public auction this time, uh, before we send them off to the recycle center. Um, so if you have any questions on that short list, I'll be glad to answer them. But again, it's just a, a. Um, so, if you have any questions on that short list, I'd be glad to answer them, but it, again, it's just a, uh, asking you to give permission to, uh, recycle.
Make a motion to accept.
Move in a second. Anything further, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Um, looks like you'll be here for a couple more of these. Um, consideration to approve a single-source dark fiber optic quote.
Uh, yeah, so, last summer, we had to do some, uh, relocating of fiber optics and copper cables for the construction of the new admin building. And during that, we also discovered there's additional fiber optics in the ground from Smithville that are no longer, or, let me say, that are not in use today because we have changed our, uh, type of services we get to our schools, and also the forethought, uh, forth-for thinking with Mr. Earls at Smithville also put in additional fibers. So, we have need, a need to get fiber optics to the football press box and the new coaches and concession stand building out at the, uh, complex, along with the fiber optic connection going to our new admin building. And so, working with Smithville, we have come to an agreement that we would pay for the time and material to expand, to extend the fiber optics to those locations, and there would be no monthly reoccurring service charges. So, this is, uh, their private fiber, and we're just asking to extend it, but, uh, uh, to allow us to use it and for school use, but at the same time, no other vendor can actually use it, so we're just trying to eliminate having another construction company come in, tear up our grounds to insert fiber optics. The location, they're just about serving what we call the last mile, which in this case would probably be about a fifty yards. Um, but it's a construction, uh, feat that we're just incurring with them. So, this has been going on for about a year, working this back and forth with them until their understanding and agreement, and so I know it'll be a big plus for Mick and the team and the coaches to have connectivity to the internet and to school records when they're in their office working, so. Again, this is a single source, which means we're just working with Smithville directly, and it's a time and material s- uh, situation. So, be glad to answer any questions.
Um, I'll anticipate a question from Sam Jones. Is, is there any chance that we could pick it up to the baseball press box?
We can probably...
I just, just throw it out there, I, I, 'cause I know that that's, that's kind of a dead zone.
Sure, uh, I will be glad to talk to them and see if we can negotiate something along with that, since it'll be fairly close. If not, I will look about doing some, uh, Wi-Fi, maybe we can get some service to get the, for that area alone.
Okay, you're welcome, Sam.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve, though.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any further questions? And then, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Um, also, we have consideration to approve a single-source card reader quotes. Mr. Earls?
So, um, this is, uh, part of the new EPS extension, the school to be ready for opening and hopefully, uh, March, the week of spring break. And we also have made an agreement, or not an agreement, but years ago, you guys, uh, made a choice to do security for your buildings. When you make a choice of that nature, you end up working with a vendor, and it becomes a proprietary system. We're extending the services to the same building to use the same contractor that has done all of our other buildings, and has provided us great service and maintenance and support with, which is Central Indiana Hardware. They also are part of the state QPA, which means they've already given us the best price that's even out there on the market, so we have already done a due diligence of getting a single quote. It's still a single source because we only asked the one vendor to provide us the information. If we can get approval tonight, uh, there's a good chance that the lead time on the equipment right now is between three and five weeks. So, we're really pushing the, the limit to get this, uh, purchased and installed before school, before the building opens. So, um, I ask for your approval to move forward with the single-source purchase from Central Indiana Hardware, and I'll, is there any questions you have?
I move approval of the purchase of the single-source card reader access for the, uh, primary addition.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any questions, comments?
I, I'm sure, and I had a couple questions. I, I talked to Mr. Irwin, Dr. Sanders about this last week. You may have clarified it, uh, 'cause about two years ago, we approved updated security cameras in all the buildings, correct?
Security cameras, the...
Like at the junior high and the high school? Is everything fully operational right now with our security cameras?
We haven't moved on to security cameras. That RFP is going out here soon. This is for card readers.
I understand, but I thought, I thought we approved the security cameras almost a year and a half ago.
It was, well, after I was on the board, so, but I'm thinking it was maybe in the summer.
It was discussed, we had to withdraw the original RFP of the security cameras, um, but we have not gone out for rebid to do all the schools.
It was included in the bonding, but we haven't approved a contract to act...
So it's not with the company you're discussing, it's Central?
Okay.
Where, where are we at with that right now? That's, I mean, that's a concern I have.
Yes, the RFP is also just about finished. We're making some final adjustments to it, and we have to add some additional drawings to the, uh, buildings because they've been added to, and also we had to modify some of the camera locations because the original drawing had too many cameras. That sounds really odd, uh, but they were not the efficiency of the camera, it's the model of the camera. So, on our new design, we have multi-lens cameras going in so we can get more of a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree radius than a single view. So, we had to redo the original drawing for all the buildings.
So it's, it's taken longer, but in the end, we're gonna have a better product, we're gonna have cameras placed in better spots, it's going to be more effective, uh, for the corporation as a whole.
Yes.
So as of right now, we have cameras in place or just becoming more and more outdated?
We have some that are outdated and working, but we have some that are not working right now in some of the buildings, that is correct.
Okay.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, now we have consideration to approve a community foundation grant agreement. Mr. Irwin, Irwin?
Yeah, so the, the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County, uh, they awarded, um, grants to nine different nonprofit organizations. One of those being RBB Schools and Edgewood Early, uh, Childhood Center. Uh, Matt Wooden had applied for that grant, and, and the nature of the grant and what they're looking to do is they're wanting to beautify community spaces, and so they're, they're investing dollars into the community to us, for us to, um, put that back into, into use here in the school corporation, uh, that would improve existing spaces that we have for kids, um, that, that foster community, that foster that growth for our kids. And so, what they approved for the, our school corporation was seventeen thousand dollars, um, and we are looking at either, um, doing an outdoor, uh, classroom shelter on the new playground back there behind the addition, or we're looking at, uh, making some improvements to the, uh, courtyard there at EPS, um, that can be used for a community play space. It isn't that right now, but we can make some upgrades to that to make, uh, some real improvement to that space. And so, uh, we're excited about that opportunity to use that money just to continue to beautify those spaces, and a huge shout-out and thank you to Matt Wooden for continuing to find, uh, ways to bring money into the corporation, and specifically to the preschool to make, um, some big improvements and, and to the quality of education that we're able to provide our students. So with that, I ask for your approval.
No motion?
I move approval.
A second.
Any questions, comments? And thanks for the, Mr. Irwin, and you for the work on getting this, uh, done. Um, the partnerships we have with Community Foundation and, and others is, is really beneficial, and I'm glad you guys keep those alive and pursue them. So thank you for that. Nothing further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, uh, would be consideration to approve revisions to RBB's contingency learning and safety plan. Uh, Dr. Sanders?
Sure. It's, uh, very, uh, thought-provoking to think about that it's been almost two years ago that, that we started down this journey of the, the pandemic, and, uh, when I think back at the early stages, uh, of, of our response, uh, to the pandemic and, um, and I remember, uh, so many conversations that, that I've had the pleasure of having with, uh, our parents, uh, who have, uh, differing opinions on, uh, on what is the best response. And, and I learned early on because, uh, as I sit, sat down with, uh, our school community, uh, one person at a time, and I, I thought about, uh, what they had to say, and, and everybody seemed to come, uh, to the table with different, uh, studies. And, uh, early on, I realized, um, who am I to try to figure out, uh, which study is legit? Which study has, uh, been proven, uh, to be true? Uh, and, and so, I, I made a determination early on to, to use, um, the CDC, uh, Indiana Department of Health, and our local Monroe County Health Department as, uh, our North Star. And as you know, when we think about the North Star, the North Star is, is, has been used for ages and ages, uh, to provide direction. And, and so that's what we've done from day one. Uh, and over the last two years, um, there have certainly been a lot of, uh, discussions, sometimes heated discussions, uh, sometimes, uh, discussions, uh, with, that brought about tears, uh, and, uh, because we all, uh, keep our students a number-one in our hearts. And, uh, so, uh, we've, we've always, uh, tried to, to use the, these, uh, organizations like the health departments and state and local as our North Star, uh, but we also have used what we try to do, uh, in our hearts, uh, to know what's best for our students. When we think about, uh, our safety plans and what we've, we've tried to do over the last couple of years, uh, it's, uh, we have to balance, uh, academics, the academic needs of our students, we have to balance in there the mental health needs of our students, and we all, uh, always have to balance in the safety needs of our students. And, and sometimes, uh, to come up with one solution that equally addresses each of those is sometimes a challenge. Uh, uh, over the last two years, when we've had to, to, uh, be all virtual, certainly that did not help, uh, the academic needs of our students. But at the time, we thought it helped with the safety needs of our students. Uh, and, and so we've tried to balance all three of those in everything that we do. Uh, and I've really enjoyed the conversations I've had, uh, over the last two years with parents. Ninety-nine point nine percent have been respectful conversations where, uh, we've been able to share, uh, rationales about where we were coming from, and, and I've appreciated that. And, and I, so I hope that our students that, that, uh, make up our school corporation, I hope that our students that are here tonight, uh, understand that, and if you look at our, our country, uh, to the history of our country, but I want them to understand that, that, uh, it's okay to have differing opinions. And it's okay to share those opinions in very respectful ways. And, uh, that when, when you take that path and you can show respect for, uh, for others, that you learn from that other person just by listening. And I've learned a lot, and, and as I've made, uh, recommendations to the board on, on what, uh, what we should do in the different situations that we've been in over the last two years, that, that I've really, uh, tried to keep the best interests of our, our students in mind, and I have tried to, uh, and I, I, it's... When I think about this, it's sometimes, uh, I think, a remarkable, uh, situation where, uh, I can often recall conversations that I've had with, with, with parents and with staff members, and think about them when, when making decisions. Uh, the other thing I want a lot of our students to, to know is, and to learn, uh, is that there are rules, there are laws of the land. And as productive citizens, uh, as good citizens in our community, uh, we can't choose, uh, which laws we follow just because we like or dislike, uh, a law. We, we have to follow all the laws. Now, we could dislike a law, we could disagree with the law, but, uh, good citizens follow that law. And, uh, and so, uh, when I, when we think about our safety plan here tonight, uh, our school corporation has always been consistent to go with the guidance that we've, the, the best of our abilities, uh, to go with the guidance, uh, of the CDC, the, the Indiana State Health Department, and the Monroe County Health Department in making, uh, our decisions. So, uh, when I created this plan and shared it with, with all of you and, and our administrators, I tried to keep those things in mind. Uh, and, and so, when we think about, uh, the, the masks, uh, there's probably everybody in this room, uh, most people, who would gladly give up wearing the masks. We don't like to wear them, but we also live in a county where there's a mask order. And if we're gonna be a, um, a good educator, a quality educator for our students, I believe it's important for, for us to show them that when there's a law, when there's an order for the community, and sometimes those orders, as in this case, sometimes those orders are made, uh, for the safety of the community, that, but being a good citizen of the community that we live in, that we're gonna follow that, that, that order. And, uh, so, uh, yes, I would love to be able to get rid of them masks yesterday. Uh, and some school corporations in the state of Indiana have quickly gone to that, but they don't live in Monroe County, and, and we do. And so, we need to respect the, the people that, that make these decisions, we need to respect our, our leaders, and, and be able to follow the orders that, that they, uh, lay out for our community. And so, uh, that's why, in, in our safety plan, that, that we said that, that once the, the governor, um, uh, lets his emergency order expire, then, uh, the, uh, local county health department, uh, will let their mask order expire, and then at that point, uh, we will go to mask optional, if you so approve tonight. And, and so, that's, that's kind of my rationale. And as I've said over the last two years, uh, when I've sat down with parents, uh, I know that I'm not gonna convince the other person, uh, of anything, that, that I just needed to listen to them, and I also took that opportunity to share my rationale for the person who had to make that decision. And so, that's my rationale, uh, for, uh, wearing of the masks. Uh, masks will still be required, uh, on school buses, uh, regardless of what happens. If we go mask optional, uh, as a school corporation, masks are still required on the bus, that's a federal mandate. Uh, as of last Thursday, uh, uh, the State Health Department, uh, lifted some of the, the mitigation strategies that, that were part of their guidelines for schools, uh, which would be, um, to, uh, schools don't have to, uh, contact trace anymore, and do not have to quarantine, uh, close contacts. And so, uh, the guy, the State Health Department said that as, uh, February twenty-third, that school corporations can do that, so that's exactly what we're going to do, and keeping in alignment with the State Health Department. They said February twenty-third that we could stop doing these things, that's what we're going to do. Uh, I did put in there, uh, some verbiage about, uh, periods of high transmission. Uh, I, I certainly hope, uh, that we are in the endemic, uh, that we're, we've moved past that. But I also wanna make sure, and it's my responsibility as superintendent, to make sure that we always provide the safest possible environment for our students. Uh, and, and so, as we, uh, quite gladly, uh, do away with contact tracing and close contacts, and believe me, every principal and every teacher in our school corporation, including myself, including Matt, we're very excited to get away from contact tracing. But, if things were to change, 'cause we can't always tell the future, but if something was to change, and, uh, and we have a, a, a spread, either... was to change, and we have a spread either in a classroom, or in a school, or the community, we want to make sure that everybody knows that we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that everybody's safe. And so that's why I put in there that we're reserving the right for our school corporation to implement some of the strategies that we've done over the last two years. We will be very cautious about that, we will be very measurable about that, but I also wanted to make sure that everybody knows that that's still possible based on what might happen down the road. We did change some other aspects of the safety plan. And I know that some would like to be able to just do away with everything, but we feel like in the safety of our students, we need to do, take a measurable approach into this endemic. And so that's why you see some aspects like visitors are permitted past the school at the discretion of the building administrator. We're going to continue to evaluate the situation that we're under, and if the numbers continue to increase, we're more than happy to open it up the way it was before. We want to make sure that we're measurable, that it's measurable response and appropriate for the situation. We will no longer be calling individual parents because their child was a close contact in a classroom. We will be sending out general notifications to let parents know that there was a positive case, and so they could be monitoring their child for symptoms. We want to make sure that our parents are still informed on what's going on in our schools. Field trips, we definitely want to be able to expand that, and we will as much as possible, but we also wanted to leave that up to the principals to decide what's the most appropriate response for field trips this summer. We hope that we can start the next school year with even more normalcy than we're trying to do with this plan. So that's basically the revisions that we've made. And to let you know that there are often, you know, when I sent the plan out last night, the plan, the original idea was to send it out Friday night. But of course, their school is happening. Even though we have, we're dealing with trying to create a safety plan, other things are happening in a school corporation. And so we have some unexpected things that come up Friday. We just found out about these changes on Thursday, and we have some unexpected issues that we needed to address. And we don't just fly by the seat of our pants and just say, okay, here's a quick plan. We take our time, we make sure that the administrators have all had input into that plan, and that it's communicating what we want to communicate. We make sure that the school board has input, and that each of you have an opportunity to share what your thoughts are on the plan. And so it's, sometimes it's a slower process, but we also make sure that we're making an informed decision. And so I wanted to get that out just as soon as possible, and last night was as soon as possible. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask them, I'll be glad to answer with every questions you have.
We have a motion to approve the revisions to RBB's contingency learning and safety plan.
I will move to approve the contingency safety plan.
Right, a second?
One second.
Okay, move to second. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I do. So, you know, with regards to this plan, there's definitely some things in the plan that I don't agree with. I feel like we've had enough time for those who wanted to be vaccinated. We've given ample opportunity in the last two years to allow families, students to be able to vaccinate and move past this. It's been two years, and I feel the anguish from the families, and my heart breaks for Mental health is really tough. I'm dealing with it with one of my kids, so I get it. We've got to move past this. So I don't agree with some of this, the way the plan is played out, so I just want to make that noted.
Anything further?
So I just want to confirm, Dr. Sanders, we're talking about what you sent out, February 23rd on the Department of Health, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so no more contact tracing, and then March 4th, which is next Friday, no more masks, unless Monroe County throws us a curveball, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I, as far as the contingency, reserving the right for contingency, I understand the purpose of that from standpoint is, we don't want to go back to virtual school, I get that. So if it blows up, I get it, we may have to go to that extreme. But that's going to be the, I mean, there's nothing that's black and white, that'd be the worst-case scenario, correct?
Yes, and I think you've seen it this year, you know, last school year, the 2021 school year, we implemented several different schedules that involved a lot of virtual learning, and we were determined to do everything we could this year to not go that path. And there were some days where we were very worried that we were going to have to do that, but we tried to use different strategies to avoid that at all costs. And so I don't want folks to think about, okay, a week later, we're going to restore masks, that's not what I'm saying.
Right.
We're going to do everything we can to avoid implementing some of these strategies, but I also wanted to make sure that we had the option to do that if that was the best thing.
In the event that it exploded?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Anything further? Are there none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next, we have miscellaneous items, information, Dr. Sanders?
Sure. We can move to a very positive aspect of the meeting, because we have a lot of congratulations to pass around. Our band and winter percussion and show choir groups at the junior high and high school have had a lot of tremendous success lately, and we want to congratulate them for all their hard work. Cash Turner ranked fifth in the state in wrestling, qualified for semi-state, and he did a really great job. He lost to the eventual runner-up in that weight class, and so he's just a really, you know, great example of an Edgewood student. So we're really glad and want to congratulate Cash. And then we have a number of teachers who are receiving awards. The Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce's Success School has released their list of Educator of the Year awards. We have from the EEECC, Lead Teacher Amber Harrison, Danielle Butler, who's a kindergarten teacher at EPS, Kaitlyn Leister, who's a STEAM coach at the elementary level, and Megan Scott, who's a Ready Schools Coach at the junior high. And as I mentioned earlier, the Edge Media Leading Light Award, well, the Edge Media Program earned the Leading Light Award. And then Cassie Hastings, eighth-grade science teacher at the junior high, is receiving a Lifetime Achievement Award for her 45 years of service. And so congratulations to all those folks.
And move right into the superintendent's report, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, as soon as I can find it. Yeah, I'm going to make this brief, but there are some, just some, I think, really important pieces of information here. Every year, as you know, students of various grade levels participate in state assessments. The WEDA assessment is for, that's taken by our English language learners. We're in the middle of that window right now, and that ends February 24th, 25th. SATs are March 2nd through the 4th. I read three, the assessments that we take at third grade is March 7th through the 18th. And I learn for grades three through eight will be April 18th through May 13th. Now, the teachers and the students, they work on the skills and the knowledge necessary to be successful at these assessments, they work on those year-round. So all throughout the school year, they're working to be able to be successful in these assessments. We have a number of formative assessments that the teachers use during the school year to make sure that the students are on track, to identify maybe specific skills that a student needs to work on, so ultimately they'll be successful at these assessments. Jenna Norris does a great job of keeping us in the know about these assessments and keeping things organized, she does a great job. Then secondly, I just want to share some information about our preschool and then our kindergarten programs. Enrollment for the preschool for next year will begin on March 1st at 10:00 a.m., and we've advertised about that in social media on our website, and I provided you a link in my report tonight. We're going to have a sneak peek into the new preschool for those families who might be considering enrolling in the preschool. We're going to have a limited opportunity, we're still in the process of finishing up some last-minute details, so we've worked with our local fire chief to be able to safely allow some parents to be able to check out a couple of the rooms in the new preschool. And so that'll be February 25th, this Friday. And then our hope is that over spring break, March 10th through the 21st, that our teachers, led by Matt Wooden, and our maintenance department, will be able to move our furniture into the new preschool and be able to open those facilities up on March 22nd. So that's the plan, and we certainly hope that that happens. Kindergarten, we have a really new innovative idea, we talk about RBB being an innovative school corporation, I love this plan, the Welcome Week. And there's been a flyer sent out to our families on our website that shows a three-part process in the Welcome Week. With the first step would be reserving an enrollment session, that'll be April 4th through the 8th, and that'll be during that, those sessions, the children will go through a fun assessment with their teachers, and the parents will be able to fill out important online forms. And then the second step would be to attend a scheduled guided tour at our open house, which will be April 8th, from 5:45 to 7:30, there'll be guided tours every 15 minutes. And then working to make sure, part three is just make sure that parents know how they can stay connected from the time they enroll until the time that they, their child starts school in the fall and beyond. So we're excited about that. And then I just want to share with you our attendance rates for the first semester, with considering what we've been through for first semester, I think our attendance rates are amazing. EPS is 95.48 percent, at the intermediate school, 95.66 percent, at the junior high, our attendance rate was 95.26 percent, and at the high school, 93.82 percent. So just want to give congratulations to our students and our parents who make sure our kids are in school, and our teachers and principals who make sure that they can come to a school that they really love and they're prideful of. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have RBB EA comments, and Mr. Yules is with us tonight.
Did he stick around? There he is.
Well, good evening, everyone, good to see everyone. Just a quick note on the safety contingency plan, apologies, I might repeat Dr. Sanders a little bit, oftentimes make notes while I'm here, gather some thoughts. Just safe to say, obviously with big decisions that affect everybody, you're always going to put people on both sides of that decision, some people are going to agree, some people not. Clearly, parents, even teachers, even admin, we all have our opinions. But I will say, at the end of the day, I appreciate that you've kept two things in focus, that's having school to the best ability we can, and the safety for everybody. Because you've got probably 2,800 people in our buildings with kids, teachers, office staff, custodians, you name it, and I know that's got to be your priority. And that's in no way to minimize the ripple effects it has, clearly it does, it's not black and white. It affects everybody, it's affected teachers, it affects kids, it affects parents, as Ms. Jacobs has alluded to, it affects us all. But at the end of the day, I know you've got to make those decisions, so because of your efforts, we appreciate and support what you do. Moving on to a little bit lighter note, I'd like to say boo and yet thank you, and congrats to Sam Jones, I suppose. Sam came here from Cloverdale after several years teaching, jumped aboard the junior high last year, and helped me with co-president of the Teachers Association, I really appreciate his energy and efforts. And yet, still congratulations for his new role as Assistant AD, I know he has great passion for that, he has passion for everything, so looking forward to seeing him in the building next year, so congrats, Sam. We'll have to find some replacements, some worthy ones. Finally, to the retirees, Nancy Swedron, as you said, 39 years, holy smokes, Jennifer Watkins, 35, and Gary Sims, 39. Obviously, I teach at a high school, I know Gary a little bit more. I'm sure to, maybe the outsider, he's the basketball coach, but I can tell you this, he is a rock star in the classroom as well. And many of our teachers, but I can tell you, he's a great A, so we appreciate, we have appreciated having him, without a doubt, so congratulations to him, and we'll see you next month after spring break, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yules.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have board member comments now, start with Mr. Tucker.
Worth, I thank all the parents for coming out and speaking their thoughts, and if I mispronounced it, I apologize, the Pelletier Cartel, thank you, forgive me, forgive us all, but I am going to pick on Parker for a minute. It's not, it's not one side against the other, Parker, we're all, we're all in the same thing together, we are one family, we've got to work together within the school corporation, and I hope that the kids aren't pitting one against the other, and families aren't pitting one against the other. So it is one big unit, and as Mr. Yule said, you have 2,800-plus people we've got to work with here, so hopefully we can get through this. I am not, I've not always been completely in agreement with the Monroe County Health Department, but I do respect that they are the authorities on that. And I kind of got knocked between the eyes last Friday myself, and I'm not going to pick on the establishment, but I don't know if you guys remember last Friday, but it was stinking cold, it was like 20. And I absolutely hate going downtown Bloomington anytime, but my wife wanted to go out to eat, and I love my wife, so we went down and we finally found a parking space, probably seven blocks from this restaurant, and to get up there, and they won't let us in, because I forgot my stinking mask. And I was mad, and I, it's like, man, I know I'm going to wear a mask from here to the restaurant booth, and I'm going to take it off because I'm going to eat. And they weren't backing down, and the guy that was stepping out to help the, whatever they call this, this service, was a lot bigger than me, so I said, okay, I'm going, I'm going back. So I had to walk, that was the hard part, walking back in 20 degrees to get my mask. But that got my point, I get it, I know that they get questioned, and I read the article in the paper about security pro 24/7. security pro 24/7. Some security company that Monroe County Health Department hired to do spot checks on businesses. I didn't know that was even going on. And they're, and they're fining people. And I thought, you know, it is what it is. I'm, I'm glad we're closer. I'm going to, I'm not, I'm going to, I got to get past the frustration point. I'm looking forward to the dates we have in, in hand. And, and I'm sure, as Dr. Sanders said, our goal is not to go back to virtual school. So if it blows up, we may have to address that. And hopefully, we're not going to be back in that situation. And as Ms. Jacobs indicated, if you want to get the shots, you've had plenty of opportunity. So I'm looking forward to moving forward and having a great spring. And lastly, again, congrats to the retirees. I can't even imagine 39 years. That's a long time. So hats off to them, and thanks for all the kids they've impacted, both in the classroom and, and the sports arena. Thanks.
Mr. Jacobs?
Well, I'll reiterate everything that you've said, Mr. Tucker. Thank you to the families for being here. Appreciate you being here. It's, it's good to hear from you. It's good to hear from the students with the media productions and everything that they're doing with that. It's just so neat to see that, that stuff. It just makes our job so much better when we see those. Thank you again for the donations. We always need donations. So that is so appreciated. And I'm sorry I missed last month. It was a really bad time in the hospital, and I was working lots and lots of hours. But I'm back now and moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I said something about Mr. Jones a couple of meetings ago, but I want to say it again. Thank you so much for coming back. Thank you for, congratulations on your promotion. Look forward, like I, like most of us say, we look forward to your, your learning and, and moving, moving to different places. I've known Sam since he was about that high. His dad and I worked the scoreboard several years together here, here at Edgewood, and had a wonderful time. I'm excited to hear the preschool. I've been, I, I get around town a little bit, and I keep checking this preschool. I think it's going to be done pretty quick. Well, I was thinking that last September, you know. So I kept, I kept thinking, and I'm so glad to hear that coming. I'm sure Mrs. Whitaker will be tickled to death to, Matt, to get you out of her building. And I'm looking forward to March 1st. I really am. I'm hoping that'll be a whole new path for us and a whole new back-to-normal type thing. So thank you, and thank you for the, the, the ladies and gentlemen, and the students that came and talked tonight. I really appreciate it. You, you sounded very prepared. You sounded very sincere, and we really appreciate it.
Mr. Muntz?
Yeah, I also appreciate the contributions this evening. Although, I will point out that it took me a moment to figure out what she was talking about, but I wasn't wearing a mask when I was walking my dogs today. However, probably last Friday, when it was cold, I do wear a balaclava or a ski mask. So that must have been where she got that. I don't know. But yeah, I don't like wearing a mask either. And I'm, I'm glad that in a couple of weeks, they'll be, we'll be able to get rid of them. I want to congratulate all the people that Dr. Sanders was mentioning, especially Kathy Hastings for the Lifetime Achievement Award. That's incredible. She and Nancy Suedren, Jennifer Watkins, were both here when I started teaching 34 years ago now. I, I also appreciate Dave Bowman for his efforts in keeping us comfortable over the years. He's done a terrific job, and always, always in a good mood, and always competent getting the, the things going. Congratulations to Cash and all the other, all the student groups. And like Mr. Yules said, got to work with Gary Sims for 12 years, and congratulations to him on ending his career. But I'm so pleased that he is going to continue to coach the girls' basketball team. And finally, I attended the IS, the Indiana School Boards Association Lobbying Day last Tuesday. And so we got to listen to presentations from the leadership from both the House and the Senate, the General Assembly, and particularly as it pertains to some of the education bills. And then we also had a session with the House and Senate leadership from the education committees. And they were, not everybody in the room agreed with everything that, that was said, but it was, I think it was a good, honest give and take of ideas. And it does sound like there have been some improvements made. But I am concerned about what already has happened, and what it's going to do to the teacher pipeline, and how we're going to replace some of these teachers as they retire. So, but that's all I got.
Thank you. I do appreciate everyone coming tonight and staying late for us. It, to me, it looks like we will be back to normal very soon. The, what remains in the plan is, is simply things that already exist. The principals already control visitors in their buildings. I mean, that's what they do. You know, they, they, they make those kind of decisions all the time for all kinds of reasons, not, not COVID-related. The, the field trips and stuff, we approved athletic trip tonight and overnight stay. Our sports teams have been going out. Our, our choir teams have been going out, groups. So things like that are, are, are back to normal. I doubt, I pray that we don't hit anything horrible. So far, when you see how the, the country has evolved with, with COVID and the reaction to COVID, and the direction that we get from, from all the Department of Health or county CDC, you know, it's, it's all moving in the right direction. So I think here, stopping the contact tracing and the quarantines here in a couple of days is, is going to be a blessing. And being able to make the masks optional starting March 4th, I mean, that's, you know, when the first day we're allowed to. And we do follow the laws. We do follow the rules that were, were given. And I think it's important to do that. But I'm excited that by March 4th, things around here will look really, really, really normal. So we appreciate you coming tonight. We appreciate the, the dedication that you have, the, the, you know, the parents and, and the students. That's kind of, you know, I, I'd like to reemphasize our, the Edgewood Media Group. You know, it was kind of a, a long meeting, and that was way back at the beginning. But they, what they're doing and what Ready Schools is doing is, is preparing our kids for the best jobs that they can get. And that's what we're here, here for. So, and I, I guess to end on, on one brighter topic, my daughter was in Gary Sims's class, and she was sitting in the back of the room. And she kept trying to get his attention, and she, he, he was busy helping other students and stuff. And so he, he didn't notice her right off. He said he turned around, and she held up this big sign that said, "I need help." And he said he just cut up right there. He, he, he was that kind of guy. I mean, he, he really enjoys being with the students, and the students enjoy being with him, and had a great rapport with him. So I appreciate him and the other retirees as well. We appreciate those who are, are getting recognized for their service and the job that they're, they're doing now. And Kathy Hastings as well. I mean, we're, we've just got a lot of good things going on. And so hopefully, here in a couple of weeks, everything will be normal, and all the tensions will, will hopefully die down, and, and we can all work together. So again, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. There will be board signatures.